Six o'clock, we call the meeting to order. We got a few administrative things to do first. Discuss the 2024 department head budget directives.
Department heads were wondering if the board had any specific directives other than keep it as close to the bone as you can for them.
And ABC asked this question too. So we have a discussion in terms of what our thoughts would be.
There's any reason that's gonna go above the last year's budget? It just has to be a really good reason to, I don't see any reason you wanna try to go over that.
I don't see any reason you wanna try to go over, but I will say, obviously, there have been some labor cost adjustments from last year's budget. You're looking at a forty percent increase in electricity and a significant increase probably in heating. Maybe that will balance.
I feel like we have, we can't say, you know, you have to keep it at X, Y, Z, because that number doesn't make sense considering what costs are. But that also means you're, this is not the time to be adding anything unnecessary. So you know what I mean, like we can't say, keep it flat, because that's not, that's not the world we live in. But we also can't say, you know, raise five percent, because we don't need to raise something, there's absolutely no reason we should do that. Does that make sense?
So you have to state it, so they understand.
So excluding the labor cost raises that the Sledgeboard has already granted, excluding the
Increases.
Increase in electricity and heating, trying to keep everything flat.
That makes sense, right? Heating, labor costs, and materials, I mean, so much in the budget is.
Materials, so.
It is my hearing for building. Now, how do you, how do you tell, like, how do you tell the highway department?
Yes.
To keep it flat if we put off some paving last year to pay for this year, now we're gonna, you know, at some point we have to let them catch up. But paving costs more, so. So I, I think for us, the basic thing is, we shouldn't be raising anything or adding, adding anything unnecessary this year. Because everything else is so high.
So no increases in discretionary spending?
Perfect.
No increases in discretionary spending.
I know, the definition was discretionary.
And you know what's gonna happen? They're gonna say, what does that mean?
Okay.
So maybe Andy, you could put down, the board is recommending no discretionary increases, which means salaries are what they were when the board changed them. Materials and fuel are, what's that? Yeah, fuel colors, right? Because it's gas.
Fuel, yeah, agreed that.
Are, are up, we know, so those can go up, but no discretionary increases.
Yep. Nope, I can certainly pass it along, and I talked with Steve today, where, you know, things like salt are definitely taking another jump fairly big this year too, so.
Well, the paving is up, we know that, so hopefully that fills the bill, but I suspect they're gonna have some clarified questions, but.
I suspect everyone will pretty much know what it should mean though.
Okay, all right. Well, you've heard the discussion, so if they had any questions, you could probably fill them in.
I, I think that that's, I think it's pretty obvious, like, there's, all those things are gonna be so huge, there's no wiggle room left.
One other question, if you don't mind, with regard to the volunteer recognition, did the board intend for that to be just volunteers? Or do they want employees involved in that as well?
Volunteed, invited?
Invited, yeah.
Absolutely invited, I think, yeah, I think, but they don't have to be there.
Yeah, they don't have to.
But we'd love to have them there, willing to come.
So hopefully there'll be enough food and stuff, so I don't know, is there any way to get a count in terms of how many?
Yeah, I think we can definitely get a, a rough count at the very least, and the police chief and I were talking today about Shepherd's Pie, and he's excited about it, so.
Yep, and Karen's bringing the Dave Cede stuff.
Yep.
Can we put Denise on the, the issue of getting the appropriate people there?
Yes.
Okay.
I think she's already.
Working on that?
Working on that, yeah.
Okay, she's sneaky. All right. Anything else with that one, for the budget? In terms of the CIP, we signed the form, we need a motion, I assume, so I move to appoint Dave Cede home to the CIP committee as the planning board representative, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Nope. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. One more administrative thing. The primary election is on the thirteenth. Can we set down what our schedule is in terms of who's appearing and for how long and stuff like that?
I'll do the open to close like I did last time.
Okay.
You guys could each do the parts you can do.
All right, I can do like four till whenever we close, so.
Rebecca's looking like she's super excited.
That's about all I can do. I'm back to work now.
Do you mind closing myself for the morning, I'll just do it twice.
Well, you could just say that the other select person, there's supposed to be three, so.
All three of them will be there?
It has to be two, that'd be.
You're supposed to have a quorum at least.
Yeah, two.
But you can designate someone to fill in your stead.
Who can do that?
I think we'll have to do that, because I can't.
Okay.
So you'd be there from four until eight, from about?
Yeah, well, if we get somebody to cover between in the morning till I get there, then you don't have to show up at all.
Okay.
Fantastic.
Is that super fantastic?
It's super fantastic, oh, I will, don't worry, I will vote.
Everyone should be here.
All right, I'll see if I can get, because I designated somebody last time.
You did for like the hour that you couldn't be there or whatever.
Well, it was a little bit moving out.
Whatever.
Okay, so I'll do that, so.
But I think last year it was somebody that was also checking people in.
Yep.
Be great if it was somebody else.
With this double duty.
Oh, sorry.
Yep, so.
As long as there are registered voter in town.
Yep. So Katrina's gonna be there all day.
I am.
I'll be there from about four o'clock on, and I will see if I can get somebody to be a desk me from when you open till I get there.
Great, I'll let down that, okay.
The meeting is Wednesday at seven o'clock, I don't know if you ladies are gonna show up?
I am moving my son into college that day, so I'll try, but I have no idea when I can return.
All right, I just, I was gonna show up.
The planning meeting?
No, it's the election meeting.
Oh, that's like a, oh, with the trans.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I really wanted to be there, but.
Okay, all right, so I'll just be the token select board person. All right.
Do you want the information from the contractors that I contacted before we? Okay, I contracted, I contacted all the contractors that I had on the list. Interested parties that got back to me pretty quickly were Carino, they're the folks that just built the Barrington building. North Branch Builders, same thing, contacted you very quickly, had some questions about where we were. And Bowen, Bowen, what were they pronounced? The folks that built, didn't design but built the middle school in Durham. Regi Construction called me back fairly quickly and said, we're just too busy, we're not, we're not taking anything over the next eighteen months and don't wanna be considered thanks for your interest. Groan and Witcher were two others that I contacted and got no response from.
That's three great choices, I'll give them.
Sent them a second round and may, may hear from them, but the other three, Carino, North Branch, and Bowen were, you know, immediate responses with questions, and their questions were things like, have we hired an architect? Do we have a delivery system in mind? Do we want the contractor to provide a preliminary budget? And do we have a building committee that you feel good about? And I said, I'm pretty sure the building committee feels good about themselves. Not sure how to answer that.
We can create that building committee, yes.
One, one thing that caught my attention when I spoke to the folks at Bowen, they said, yeah, we'd be happy to combine our meetings if you'd like to talk with us on a preliminary basis. And I said, oh, are you in town for another project? And they said, yeah, we're over at Masway, coming up shortly. So he didn't say anything more about it, but I thought, I hadn't heard anything about a project at Masway.
I didn't either.
That's not necessarily gonna help a municipal project if they've got something planned. Maybe they're just holding a school district meeting at Masway, but it didn't sound like it, he was.
But if they're willing to, it might be possible that they have grants or some funding from something.
Could be. That was just something to be aware of, that I picked up on in the conversation with.
Okay, that's good.
If you can work together and save on some expenses, that'd be great.
And I had forwarded the Barrington floor plan, it was a little awkward to work with, but gave you a rough idea of what they're looking at. And they are, I had the office hours too, they're eight to five Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, eight to six on Wednesday. And I didn't realize that Barrington's town offices are always closed on Friday.
No, interesting.
Although Carter apparently may be there some Fridays and could meet with us if we wanted to.
Can I also say, I spent some time going through all of this, and one of the things when we originally started this plan was, I thought we were talking about a slab with like radiant heat, and that's why I was really strongly encouraging a single story. But then it very quickly became a basement because of storage. Once we've installed an elevator, it doesn't make as much sense to not use the cheaper second floor space. So I just wanna say, I think we should open ourselves.
Cheaper second floor space, what do you mean?
So if, let's say it's a hundred and sixty-five dollars per square foot for the first floor, the most expense comes from the exterior. I think John was trying to tell us this before, it comes to the exterior. So the next floor actually is, is it like fifty percent of that amount, ninety-five?
When you go to the second floor, you cut the roof in half.
Right.
The area in half. You don't double the area of exterior walls.
Exactly.
And you already put in the infrastructure for getting to the second floor, paid for that. And when we looked at it before, the cost savings was really not significant.
On the second floor?
Of going to the second floor.
Oh, okay.
But the big, there's two advantages. We're building in, what was it, the Aqua Fair Conservation District.
Right, so you're using much trees.
You should be focusing on low impact development.
Right.
So when you make a smaller footprint, less runoff.
Right.
And in fact, you could add, from what we previously, previous design, you could add fifty percent to the building size with an addition, and only then still get to almost as big as what you would've had if you built a single floor. So.
Right. So yes, I think that's, that's what it, but once, for me, it was like, if it was slab, it was at least environmental impact soil-wise. But then now that there's a basement, you're already having to put in all that infrastructure for the stability and all that stuff. So to me, I, I think we're, if we're gonna put in an elevator, put in an elevator and have it be three stories. If you're not gonna put an elevator, have it be one floor and don't do the basement. So I just wanted to say that I think we should reopen that.
The only issue I would have is the mastic effect of a two-story building.
Mastic?
Mastic, mastic, so how big it is, how massive it is.
Yeah, I don't think we're planning a very big building.
That would be my only concern, but yes, and also you can put radiant heat in if you have a basement, so.
Yeah, yeah.
You can still do that.
Yeah, it just, it's, it, so if it's, let's say it's two hundred dollars for a first floor, and the basement floor per square foot, I think it's, if I remember, it's like fifty, seventy-five, whatever, per square foot. That's cheapest once you have that first floor. But then the second floor, according to all the things I've read and read, it's much cheaper for that, for those square feet, because you already have, you already have all those things you weren't accounting for.
Just, just take into consideration the nursery home being proposed at the Stratford County complex is over five hundred dollars per square foot, so.
Yeah, this was for, I was just looking at houses, I was trying to just get an idea of, for me, it was the elevator, like, that's this big expense. But it's not a big expense if you're saving money on square foot for the building, and if you're putting it in anyway, there's no reason not at that point to go there.
Understood. And this is five, right?
This is Barrington, and this is closer to eight.
Oh, it's, oh, okay, that's right.
With the addition of the meeting room on top of that.
You talking about the size?
Yeah, this is Barrington's, so yeah, it's eight thousand.
Oh, that's interesting, so you go in there, then you have all the different areas you can snout into.
So Barrington, the building is about eight thousand three hundred eighty-four square feet, the gross area, not counting that meeting space. And the meeting space gross area is eleven hundred square feet. I went through the drawing, and in two places along the length of the building, and in two places in the short dimension of the building, put in all the dimensions that are in the drawing. This came off in eighth of an inch difference.
Oh, no.
But you'd expect it's, it's the same length, or do you measure it? Or do you, whatever, through whatever rooms you're measuring it? And I also didn't start to go through the room, well, that, this was the, there's no dimensions on the addition, the meeting room. So you have to scale that, so I scaled it from, uh, three different times at three different scales, came out with quite similar results. And that's kind of about forty-five feet long, twenty-four feet wide, and then I haven't finished this, but this is looking at each of the rooms. That meeting room has a net area of almost a thousand square feet, kind of a meeting. So that's a little bit bigger than the area of this room. It's smaller than the downstairs room, or smaller than the town, the town hall.
And this structure doesn't have a basement?
No basement.
What's the size of the gym at the Masway School when we end up having our meetings?
That was one I never got the answer to.
Okay. That seems to be a size that.
Much bigger, much, much bigger than any of these meetings, yes. But I actually don't know. That's the fourth one. I don't know if anybody else had observations about it, I did have a number of them.
But, but the thing is, we don't wanna spend too much time on a plan that's ours, we're just trying to look at it briefly to get some ideas.
I think there's, I think it's useful to look at other plans.
Yes.
And think about how they work, how they would work for us. Part of your features data that you say, aha, look at that, that's clever.
Exactly.
There's other features data that you look and say, hmm, I think that's kind of dumb, I'm not planning on doing that.
It's interesting how they use the corners here to not place these, make, you know, bigger hallways and big spaces, and it's an interesting feature.
So Barrington, Barrington's population is just a tiny bit over the double population of lead. I know that I had at one time what the number of office staff in the building was. I wasn't able to find that in all the documents I have on it. But my recollection is that at one time they had twenty-six people.
That sounds, I remember either twenty-four or twenty-six from a conversation with Connor.
Twenty-six is what I recall. And right now, we have nine, I believe, plus volunteers in the building, our office building. So observations from this, the staff and public circulation areas are combined. There's, public comes in here, and the public circulation area is just the same as the staff circulation area. There is no separate, they're not kept separate.
This is really neat how, I think you were trying to say the last one, I love how you can close that, have that office we were talking about, but then if she needs to help out, that one window, I think that was similar to that first.
Other one? This is, this is three windows into, or three service windows into this small.
Oh, the other way, okay, sorry. I thought it was the opposite direction, sorry.
No, this is, double doors open, and this is, both the town clerk and the tax collector, they have two separate people, separate offices. Both of them have small discreet waiting areas, this little waiting area.
Okay.
I'm not sure, but my guess was that perhaps this one was an accessible service window, so it's lower. That might be a reason why, because otherwise, I mean, you can't, it doesn't, it's not reasonable to try to serve somebody at this window and at this window at the same time.
Right. Interesting.
Town administration has a service window up here, but building administration and planning administration don't have service windows. They're down at this end of the building, and they don't have service windows. There's doors, there's windows.
I would assume that's due to the nature of their need for spreading ped workout, laying ped workout.
And yet we're having a service window.
Yeah, so were you saying, maybe that's something we have to have? I think they said that they liked having it for people that just wanted to pay something, or.
Yeah, we have, I mean, our service windows are just windows. They happen to be there, they open them, otherwise I think they wouldn't let them in, but.
So maybe that's something we should ask to make sure, like, see, does that, is that something that they wanna keep or not?
Our, our service window is, service windows are part of what's required in order to have separate public circulation and staff circulation areas.
Right, but what he's saying is that, that they're, like, a lot of the meetings they're having, that person has to come in, so does that make sense to have that be part of that grouping of separate?
Would, so, there's a question I brought up earlier, if you wanted to keep the separate staff circulation area.
Right.
That was a recommendation from the police chief for security reasons, is that people that come into the building can go to a service window to talk to any of the different departments within the building, but they don't go into the staff circulation areas until they've been buzzed in. And that seems to be, I'm not sure if that's the case here, there are windows, but the entry vestibule down here is twelve feet wide, and that width would allow people to bunch up at the exit, at the exit and putting on coats or hats when they just discovered that it started snowing or it started raining. But the length of it is only about eight feet, and that's really marginal for a walk-off mat. From recommendations I've read, ten foot is, is the recommended minimum for the walk-off mat function to work. And the designs we've done, I've tried to keep at least ten feet and mostly twelve feet to provide the walk-off mat function.
There's plenty of room, I wonder why they didn't do that, because you have, the door doesn't come out for a few feet, right? So what's my own map?
Just an observation. We, I haven't drawn any entry vestibules that were as wide as this. The entry vestibule to this building is very wide, quite wide. The meeting room over here is set up, so it has a separate entrance, it's via a lobby. And it looks like that would allow access to the meeting room when the rest of the building was shut off. This door here might be locked, so you can't go out this way. You have access to two toilet rooms, but there's no vestibule, and it's just a single, single entry dual leaf. So a single leaf here, a single leaf here to get into the meeting room. And this size meeting room, depending on what, what, how it's set up, whether there's chairs or not, whether there's tables or not, you could have an occupancy of well over a hundred, if there's no table or chairs. And we all have to go up through that one door, and I suspect, but don't know, that this one might be a virtue. For this the size of assembly space, you'd have to have at least two exits. Quick feature is, the meeting room has its own separate storage room. This is something in the designs for the town hall we were trying to incorporate, so that you'd have a place outside of the meeting room where you could store chairs or tables, so that racks like what we have over in the corner here could be wheeled into, and not be taking up space in the meeting room. And that was the observations that I had. They do have four toilet rooms, no shower.
You know that'll be remembered for that shower, it's just the rest of them, right?
I don't know, you'll see, you'll see the rest of the drawings that come up.
Oh, good, I'll play.
Hey, before I go on, I have three full plans to present. But I have a comment I wanted to make. I wanna provide context from my previous comments about construction delivery methods. There are two points that I think are important. One is, I think the customer should understand how risk and cost are shifted with the different delivery methods. And I think the decision should not be based on one example, especially without understanding the particulars of that example and how they compare with the town situation. The choice of construction delivery method is up to the select board. I don't have an opinion on the choice of the van, on how the choice is made. It really is your choice. Two thousand other full plans. So this is the full plan I looked at last time, and there were some obvious deficiencies in it. And there was some comments about it, some suggestions, so this is a modified version of that. And it includes a toilet room with shower. And yet it didn't take up any more space, where this, if you look at previous design, it uses this unused space here. And so that's a feature that also will show up in the other designs.
Sorry, yes.
This one is twelve feet by seven foot, just because it, it had this space here. There are smaller designs, a little, going a little closer to square, increase to seven, and there are also designs you see later where the door opens outward instead of inward, and in some places that fits nicely. It has a better kitchenette arrangement than the previous one. One stairway has been moved. I did look into the need for, do you have to have both stairways? And you don't, as long as you have this second basement egress method over here. I depicted, depicted it in a way that really doesn't show what is it. There's been talk about it being a bulkhead. I, I think that if it's dependent on for emergency egress, perhaps it should not be a bulkhead. Perhaps it should be a little doghouse structure, like what's on the backside of a library building. So you walk upstairs and there's actually a full-size door that opens. For its function of getting equipment into the basement, it might be a double door. Perhaps not necessarily even size leaf, you know, it might be a three-foot leaf and a two-foot leaf, and the two-foot is the second one to be opened. But I think it's, in an emergency situation, it's good if all the exits look like the kind of exits that you're used to using to get out of a building. Whereas a bulkhead is a different kind of operating procedure, and we're not gonna have the stewards saying, directing you to the emergency procedures.
This, does it have to be, it can't be stairs, right? Can't there be a ramp?
No, it would, it would be stairs.
What if you've got somebody that's, can't navigate stairs, if he's the elevator, get into the basement, fire occurs.
How do they get out?
How do they get out?
How do they get to the second floor?
What second floor?
I'm just saying, how do they get up second?
Same issue anywhere.
They do the same issue anywhere.
There are.
What's the second floor?
No, like, if you're on the, sorry, if you're on the second floor of any building, and you're in, like, how do you get out without using stairs?
I don't know that, I'm not, this is only one story, so in the basement zone.
In a simple case, you hope that someone carries you down the stairs or up the stairs.
If not, you're kind of stuck, which is.
And you see the future of challenges for the years.
Yes.
The next thing is that you have built-in areas of refuge.
Yes, okay.
So there's.
Like the stairway.
An area that is built to be fire resistant for a longer period of time than the rest of the building.
And closed off, yeah.
And it's known where that is, and so that's a place that the firemen head to in case there's somebody.
Correct.
Take them first, yeah, that makes sense.
Well, it'd be nice to explore if that basement egress, if there's a way to get it, so the incline is not so much so somebody is in a wheelchair or something, they could get out, if they needed to.
When you do that, you make it just enormously long, right? Because that's great.
Well, something to be explored.
But you tend to, I mean, great coming out of that, you know, if you might be able to do something.
Well, it's all a lab, so.
I, I've drawn it as if it's coming out properly to the building, but it also. I, I've drawn it as if it's purp, coming out properly to the building, but it also comes out parallel to the building. So, the buildings we're looking at are on the order of approaching or, or a hundred feet or so. So, even with a landing at the bottom and a landing at the top, and of course you've gotta have interim landings, 'cause you can't go to more than, have a rise of more than thirty inches before you need another landing, um, but still, you could get, you could have a ramp where you come out the corner and the ramp goes all the way up until you're out here, perhaps.
All right, I'm just thinking about somebody who's in that condition.
But I thought when we talked about, we really talked about it just originally, it really wasn't something, that's why we were saying you could use a less expensive elevator, 'cause it was really just more...
Well, the thing is, is if it's fire, you're not supposed to use the elevator, so...
I know, what I'm saying, when we talked about it, it was that we would have an elevator, 'cause we should have an elevator, and that makes sense, but that, and we should, and that's the deal, but that, it was really much more a basement for storage unless the cold community coming in and out. But likely there's somebody from the community in the military in the basement, it's very small.
Well, you've, he's got the top...
Well, I'm good up here, service in the basement. Where our commission supervisors, um, cemetery trustees, et cetera. These, these are people that, um, they're not in the building eight hours a day, four or five days a week, um, so...
But if they were in a wheelchair, would they have to go down there, or would be, like, if somebody was on those committees and they were military, then we could say, we could have switch an office, or we could do some, make some accommodation if you're concerned about making sure it's accessible.
If, if an individual in, in a wheelchair was concerned about it, then maybe they, their practice is they don't go down there unless someone else is with them.
All right, just something to consider.
So...
And our newfound room up here, what is, the twelve...
Oh, so, so... I didn't label, um, there was talk before about, um, public works director. There was talk previously, the previous meeting about maybe these commission supervisors, cemetery trustees, maybe, instead of the previous one where, yeah, where two separate rooms, maybe they're all stuck together in one. So, I stopped labeling some of these, here's another one, nine by eleven. I, I think some spaces have been added when we talked about, um, like, the public works director. And so this may need to grow. I think the thing to really focus on and that we should be thinking about is kind of the general arrangement, how does it function for the public coming in? Because remember, this was, this design had two entrances, if you were going to PCB, you'd go over here. And we had service windows, and you could be buzzed in to go to those offices or a meeting. And then we had a separate entrance which handled, um, town clerk, tax collector, and the selectance office. But Rebecca, um, let me see, I'll jump over to another design here. So, here's an unfinished one. But in looking at the, uh, graph theory, Rebecca pointed out that, um, we had one design where PCB office did not have a service window directly from their office. See, this design is like what they have right now, where there's a service window directly into each of their offices. But instead, they had, um, a service window which was across the corridor from them, and this is a staff corridor. So, here's a design where the service window is across the corridor from them. Someone comes up, you push the buzzer, um, they have a, a big window in their door, they have a window next to it. If they're sitting in their office, they can see who's there. If they're expecting a certain person to come in for a meeting, they could just directly buzz them in from their office. If they don't know who it is and what they're there for, either one of them could come forward and, you know, talk to them about what their business is and what their questions are, and so... And then there's a door, um, where they, this would be a control door, where they could be buzzed in, um, to the staff space. So, here's a design where there's just, um, one lobby, and in that one lobby you have service windows for the town clerk, tax collector. You can have a service window for, uh, selectance office, and you can have the service windows, although not direct, for PCB. And it's all in one lobby, one entry vestibule.
Can you work in a bathroom there someplace?
Uh, yeah, the bathroom, okay, so, this is the most recent design, and this is obviously unfinished. So, um, the public toilet room needs to be worked in here. This does bring up another feature is, um, the elevator, where should the elevator be? Because in, um, previous designs, here's PCB over here, and the elevator's way the other way in the building. There's PCB over here, um, the elevator is in the middle, so it's a little closer.
I'm just gonna use it a lot, right?
Apparently, um, PCB may be one of the bigger users, staff users of the elevator. So, thinking about that, here's a design where elevator is close to them. Note yourself, provide egress. This, yeah, it's drawn right now, it was, it's a long dead-end corridor, can't have that. That also made me go back and look at, how big does a PCB meeting room need to be? Right now, they have a very, very large space. And TCPC one, when they were asked, um, how big the meeting room needed to be, the written answer was it needed to be big enough for four or five people, and they wanted it to be, uh, twelve feet by twenty feet. And the architect then made a note that if you wanted for four or five people, ten by ten or ten by twelve, it'd do. But I've been drawing it at a hundred and ninety-two square feet, twelve by sixteen, but it may not need to be that big. So, this is an unfinished design, but this is, here's a design where, um, you can do what, uh, the graph theory said, as long as, uh, the PCB offices don't have, don't need to have the service window directly in their office. This is a design where, um, again, similar, the, uh, PCB offices, the service window is not directly in their office, but there is just one, um, entry vestibule in one lobby. Town clerk, tax collector is ahead. I was trying to keep, in this design, trying to keep the, uh, footpath from the entry to PCB to be fairly short. I don't know if it's, to what extent it's really a problem, but coming back to TCPC days, we were told that they get lots of...
Dirty boots.
Cross, uh, yeah, structured workers, um, with dirty boots, so...
That is still the case.
So, so, um, I mean, that could be a reason why you wanna have one with a completely separate entrance. But here, I was trying to keep it short, um, whereas in this one, um, you walk all the way across there in the middle. This, this design, this width of the building, um, is narrower than the others, so this building would, if it's kept to be rectangular, be longer than the others. It's most efficient, uh, if your corridors serve offices on both sides of the corridor. This building is a little too wide for just a corridor down the middle with offices on each side, so there would have to be some little spur corridor, um, to get to some smaller offices. Otherwise, these offices would be, uh, seventeen or eighteen feet deep on each side of a five-foot wide corridor, which is obviously too big. I think, oh, um, this design, um, this is, again, the, the real feature of, or real thing to look at is, is the entry in the lobby. There are features over here that are definitely not, um, ready for prime time. This kitchenette should not be called the kitchenette, it is bigger than the kitchen in my house. It is, it is the same length, it's drawn half feet long, which is the same length as my kitchen, and it is wider than my kitchen. And you can see over here, I stopped labeling, you know, what's in these, um, so this is really not an ideal design. This is also a design where the elevator is at the other end of the building from PCB. So, there's more work to be done, um, but, um, I think... Okay, and the other thing of this is the town clerk, tax collector, doesn't have an outside window. Their view to the outside is across the lobby and seeing these double glass doors like what we have for an entry to this building.
So, I do like this purple section that you've got.
I actually really like the purple section.
Yeah.
So, do you like that purple section better than this purple section? Oh, and I should also talk about the entry vestibule, that's a question. In this design, the vestibule, it can be entirely interior, it could be entirely exterior. It can be kinda half and half like this. Is there a strong preference? Even if it's interior, um, it could be, um, this design, see here, the vestibule is interior, but they have columns out here, and there's a roof over it, so...
It's like a porch.
It's, it's like a porch, you're not...
I think, the thing I don't like about, scroll back to one, I think, this one, is from, you're coming from in and you're not familiar, which is the main entrance? So, you'd have to have a significant signage to say, "PCB, this way," town clerk, whatever, that one. The other one that you showed with the porch up front, it's pretty obvious that that is the main entrance, I think.
Yeah, that's, and that's what we're fighting right now, and, you know, the people we are fighting, because they end up walking in circles, they don't come forward.
Well, they get from three of the things they have to choose from, so that's a...
I think there's, there's an advantage to this design compared to what the building you have now, is that at least all the entrances are on the same side. Whereas right now, when you drive into the, the parking lot, you can't see the other entrances. Here, they're all on the same side. Depending on how the building is oriented, um, and how the drive is coming up to the parking area, it could be immediately obvious that there are two entrances. So, if you see that there are two entrances, the obvious question is, well, which one should I go to? So then signage comes in.
It goes very far.
So, I think that it's probably not gonna get everybody in the right place, but it's gonna, I think it would solve ninety percent of it compared to the building you have now, where you cannot even see the other entrances when you drive up. And there's two more entrances, uh, you know, around the corner and then around the corner again.
And just to give an example, the police department had a hard time getting in the building today when we were doing security button checks, and, so, people didn't necessarily know which end of the building is which. Took a couple of us leaning out and yelling, "Over here."
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm gonna bet you're in the...
So, here's a design where there's just one.
I mean, I like the just one.
Here's a design where there's just one.
The thing I don't like about this is the town clerk, tax collector with the walkway behind it. I don't like that particular thing, but...
Well, this is a design where, um, all the offices have outside windows, including town clerk, tax collector. Just because the vestibule is drawn like this, it doesn't need to be. I started drawing that because it, I thought actually kinda helped with the shape of this lobby to make it more likely that you could get a single file which then divides it into two. And, um, it was trying to keep everything in the rectangular footprint. When you, and, and I think that with the, um, two entrances, which is, um, what we had here, two entrances, you divide the traffic, and so having a, a single leaf, uh, on a door, entry door, is, is probably reasonable. When we put it all into one, um, it might be that you really wanna have, uh, the double doors like this. And so, even with this design, this vestibule could be, you know, a vestibule that projects out...
And you gotta offset for what reason?
Oh, here?
Yeah, you gotta offset for...
It's, it's to provide the, the length of travel for a walk-off.
Oh, okay.
Vestibules do at least three things. If you open into a large enough area, like three thousand square feet of open area, which we don't have, then you're required to have, um, a vestibule or another method, uh, to limit the, uh, conditioned air loss. You know, you open a single door and all your heat goes out in the winter, or your air conditioned, air goes out in the summer. Well, so it does that. It also provides, um, a walk-off mat, um, to try to keep dirt out of the rest of the area.
I'm, I'm just thinking in terms of if there's an emergency, people go out, they come out that door and they go straight, instead of having to do this serpentine kinda thing to get out.
Right, so that's, that's the reason, yeah, yeah, it does a little bit better.
Because if there's a whole bunch of people trying, not that we have like concerts or whatever in here, there's fifty, sixty people trying to get all at once, but when people come out, they go straight, they don't necessarily curve to the side and go up to the, you know, I don't know, maybe that's something the fire chief can...
Yeah, no, there's a, there's a bank in Portsmouth that we've done business with that has a marvelous long entry vestibule like this, really fancy. Very nice stonework.
Coming in there.
Very nice woodwork.
Imagine the stonework.
Lots of, lots of glass, um, it's really nice and fancy. Now, I, I think that probably once, once you get to where all the services are, are accessed from a single lobby, that then going to double doors, um, and, and making it a straight act, a straight shot, whether it's entirely outside or at least half and half, makes sense.
Can you go back to that last one for a second?
This one?
Yeah, so if you did that with this, and it was that long out here, could, could there in any way use that space and then have, have the second window here? So we'd have that thing we talked about where we had that extra, um, extra room, town clerk, tax collector's work?
Yeah.
You know, so that'd be... The thing that the town clerk, tax collector was asking for was this, an extra room with a door on it, a closed room.
Right, so, so, if you closed this off and the window was here, and then they could go in here, or they could come out here and work the window, or have like a place they could talk to somebody.
Well, the idea was to, was still, still, um, keeping the town clerk, tax collector staff separated from the public.
Right, but remember how they wanted to have a separate, wanted to have, they, they... Is there anyone more I can talk to?
Yeah, yeah, they basically had...
If she had, if she had to work as it was busy, she could, but she could close it off and actually focus on her work without being distracted?
Previous designs...
It seems like, yeah.
So, that was this design here.
Yes, that one.
And this was a separate room with a door, so...
You could open it and have people come work on the window if you needed, but it was closed most of the time.
This would, this would be used when the patron needs the privacy of the closed room.
But there's this window here that I thought you explained it as, also you can use that.
Correct, the, the patron comes in and sits at chairs here. And the town clerk, the tax collector is here, servicing that person.
On the one we just had, you don't have two windows, there's no room for that. So, I was just trying to think if there's a way to change that.
So, you're saying you would like, you're thinking you'd like to add this room?
Well, it was something that was important that we, I mean, we all seemed to agree that it was a...
I think that, from what I've seen, the, the most important, uh, private conversations typically take place. The town clerk will initiate it and then send the people to either Denise or myself to talk about what potential op... It's almost always about taxes and back taxes.
So, you don't really need that room?
That's not what she told us.
No, that's what she told us.
She told us if somebody's coming to get a death certificate or something like that...
Oh, that's true, they, they do the marriage and death certificates, and sometimes it might be...
They don't want to, and also when applying for, uh, marriage licenses, there's PII that's in there, and they don't want people to hear it, so that's...
It takes a long time to do, too, yeah, to think of those. The most emotional people I've seen have been people over their taxes, and typically the town clerk has brought them to Denise's office or my office, and talked to them there. The most emotional people I've seen have been people over their taxes and typically the Town Clerk has brought them to Denise's office or my office and talked to them there.
She also mentioned death certificates and things like that.
Vital statistics.
Vital statistics where...
Yeah, so it would be nice if, I don't know if we can have space to do it, like your sense, but...
So certainly. I'm quite surprised because Katrina, when you saw this before, you looked at this and said, oh, this is needed, we could take this out.
No, I think what I was trying to say at the time, because I did say it wasn't needed, I'm saying
Well, excuse me.
That if, if she's going to work here, I was saying it didn't have to be another window. We wanted to keep a closed area, but I was like, if she's going to just go from here to here, why do that? But, and I don't, we can go back or whatever, but...
So you're saying she could have a system where she just rotates to another window?
The interesting is, can you make the second window the room that can be closed off? But that's open most of the time and only closed if necessary.
Right, so it's an option, but yeah, so can we go to the one you just made? Because I think what was saying was the same person was going to move and that didn't make sense to me. But here, you have this opportunity, you've already got this space. Couldn't this person have a window and we could have a closed, it could be open when you need to have two windows, but closed when you don't? Does that make sense?
And close it if the person wants to. I understand what you're saying.
And because I think what I didn't like about the first one was there was two here and it was the same person was going to move over here, that didn't make sense to me.
Yeah, the, I don't see, even the other design was very cumbersome in operation. Because the person that comes to the window, you don't know which window they're going to end up at.
Right, but if they leave it closed, they're going to go to the one that they're supposed to go to unless you need the other window? Or if they're both working?
Well, the thing is that both of them need to be open and there's no need for particular privacy. This does offer some additional privacy because you have this dividing wall. I think more could be done on, this is about seven foot wide opening, so it doesn't need to be as wide as that. We've already talked about the masking sounds being used as possibility in this area.
Yeah, I just, I just, yeah.
And you just have logistics of just, there's two windows there, but they're not manned, if you will, staff all the time.
It seems like a lot of space here for another window when that could be the room that they're asking for, so to me it just made more sense to figure out how to use it. Or if you, this vestibule you have more even more good.
Well, one of the things I could not figure out about how to work with that one, if you always have to go into a room, if that's where your second service window is, is in a separate room, the getting people in and out is cumbersome. And yeah, you'd like to have, okay, there's a single file line coming in and then when the light turns green, whichever light turns green, you go into that room.
Right.
And the door closes behind you and when you're done, the other door opens.
With that design, I said, why do you have the third window? Let's just make it a room.
The reason, the reason for the third window, and this was the Town Clerk Tax Collector asked for it, was that when she was just working on reports, that she could be in here and not be visible to the public that's coming in, but she could still keep tabs on it, so if the line built up, she could come out here and service officials.
Then why would she need a window when she just needed an office space? I think that's, I think we're stuck on the same problem.
The window was so that she could then also, it could also function to have this private service room.
Kill two birds with one stone kind of thing.
I didn't invent this, this was, this was a drawing.
No, I guess, that was where the communication we had was, because I did like the idea of having this private space.
So you could set it up like a cattle thing, so that there are openings, the cattle goes in, you service a thing and then the other door opens and they push them up in the house. You could do that.
Roll them to the stairway?
Yeah.
All right, anyway, I don't want to waste any more time, I just, I do, I did like the idea of having a quiet space because there's so much private information and even just when you're registering to vote, which I'm familiar with recently, you know, just having all your information being said out loud in front of people is uncomfortable.
That's some of what I found was kind of amazing about this design.
Yeah, it's too many people.
I mean, here, I think with these big double doors, they were even expecting that the line at times would be out into the corridor. I mean, this is, this is a design just like what we had at Town Hall that we want to get away from. And these rooms, the size of these rooms is not much bigger than what we had at Town Hall.
And the thing is, I suspect the Tax Collector, they have, just like we do, two big busy times and then the rest of the time it's not too busy.
Right.
So...
So how about when the people wouldn't need that?
So that's why in all of these designs, I wasn't making a separate room for the Town Clerk Tax Collector. So that you, you're not likely to have much of a line at the Selectman's Office. You're not likely to have much of a line at PCB, but you might have two people. You might have two people. So by making this all one room, it's very unlikely that you get a maximum waiting line, waiting line at TCTC and a buildup at the other two places at the same time. So overall, it reduces the kinds of floor that you need. So I'm hearing there's strong preference for a vestibule that functions straight through.
It's not that much more expensive, right, to, it is though, to make more.
Is this definitely valid?
But we're being very, very specific, is this what we're supposed to be doing specifically for our design plan? Is that what we're saying?
I think you're going to have to give them something that's, at least we think would probably work. Because then you'd use their expertise to say, okay, well, if you tweak this a little bit, you know, so...
Well, my suggestion here is that by us doing this, we should be able to arrive at a design that works functionally for us. This is, this is not drawn to perfect scale and here I'm moving rooms around, I'm not moving walls around.
If somebody said to us, they gave us a plan and we said, could you tell us what the difference would be if we made it one floor or two floors? It feels almost like this could be the second floor. Is that, like, so we wouldn't have to redesign, I'm just saying if we have, if we're trying to look at the best price and options. I don't want to make you do a ton of work, so is that, like, does that mean we should have completely different designs, I guess? And so if that's so, then we should find out more about costs.
Well, then what do you put it on the second floor? Because right now, like for this one, it's all serviced out of one lobby.
Right.
If you move like the town administrative offices upstairs, now you have two offices.
Well, I'm thinking all the things that need to be serviced here can be here, but then...
But what do you put upstairs?
Well, that's the question, so we have a meeting room on this floor, do we have that meeting room on the second floor? Do we have these extra offices on the second floor that finance officer, I don't know. I like the one floor better for smoother than use. I just want to make sure that somebody's come to us and say, why are you guys not building two floors? This is a waste of money.
So in the previous design, the previous design, we ended up with a very large unassigned area, five hundred square feet.
Yeah, people didn't like that.
And people didn't like that. And that was just because we have three different service areas and they don't add up to have two of them exactly equal the size of the third. We put the two that have the most traffic on the first floor. I think it might be worth redrawing this because if you take out all this big file storage area here...
Same thing on the second floor too.
And the second stairway, the whole thing can go away.
Like this whole...
The stairs, the whole top, you just have, you'd have to have another toilet somewhere, but, or maybe you don't, you've got two. How many do you need?
Okay, so again, separation of staff from public and that's why there's two stairs here. This stairway is staff going up to the second floor staff. And the other stairway is public going up to the second floor public area.
And what was it that they were going to be able to do on the second floor that we needed them to be able to do?
Town administration.
All the town administration, the Selectman's Office was on the second floor. And...
So what if planning and zoning was the second floor? What if planning and zoning was the second floor? You have the meeting and the two windows that you need, so you have that same board.
There's a huge difference in the traffic that you get for Town Clerk Tax Collector and PCB.
Right.
That traffic is much higher than the Selectman's Office traffic, if it's properly directed. Not the situation you have now.
So this is the slowest, you're saying?
So we put the slower, the group that sees the least traffic on the second floor.
Least number of traffic.
Okay, got it, so you've done that already?
And you put the...
They're not that slow.
And you put the group that has the highest traffic on the first floor. But if you take out this very large storage area, if you take out the second toilet room, and perhaps if you do something different here, and perhaps this meeting and workroom really just has to be sized for the four or five people that they said.
Right.
Then that makes this first floor smaller and that might mean, because there isn't as much to be eliminated from the second floor. This is, this is the file storage area, which is smaller than what was on the first floor. So that brings the two floors perhaps closer to matching.
Well, that's exciting, so we should do more work with that.
That's my next thing.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That would be kind of like a version of this, taking out some of these not needed spaces and then seeing what fits.
That was the other thing, the unassigned, it was hard to get them like expansion.
Everyone was mad about it, right?
Yeah, which is kind of like, well, we built an expansion, but they didn't, they didn't get it.
And I think nobody wants to pay for waste or it could be something one day and that, we already dealt with that when we didn't deal with this properly, so... And I think you're making a much smaller footprint, so that's exciting.
So you just gave an example which is entirely opposite. In this building, when this building was built, it was oversized.
Right.
The second floor wasn't finished.
Right, everyone was mad about it because I'm like, why did you make a floor we didn't now need?
Point out where would it be if it wasn't built that big? What would you need right now?
Except for we would have had to do things differently a while ago, so we would have dealt with the Town Hall, I think, differently. All this would have, it gave us a space, but it gave us time to waste.
Well, the thing, the reason this building is the way it is or was, is because of money. Because this particular, that particular side was another, I think, eleven or twelve feet and there was money to finish the upstairs.
Right.
So when we went out to bid, the price was up significantly. It was like a quarter of a million dollars just to finish the top floor.
Right.
And we didn't have it, so we had to cut back in terms of the size of the building and not finish the top floor. So it was money, it wasn't...
Right, but it's, it's how the town remembers the story.
Just because they remember it doesn't mean that's the way it was, that's how they remember it.
We have to be able to tell the story and make it make sense because it, I've been on the other side, it's confusing. You only get the information you get and two people yell untruths and it's very hard to know the truth is.
The interesting thing to finish this top floor is about a quarter of a million dollars and we didn't do it. The thing is, we had somebody do it years afterwards and it was a little over, almost twenty-five thousand plus a little bit. So, big difference. We had Chet Murch's father actually do the work.
Which is fine, that we'll just say.
Yeah, no, I understand.
We're paying for, I mean, there's thoroughly gaps in the walls, so we just have a little bit of expense to...
Quarter of a million versus twenty-five thousand, so you know, use the math, so...
So yes, I think the fourth design I was going to work on was a two-story design. Take out the features from this that are no longer called for and that shrinks the first floor footprint and that helps with the second floor and this unassigned space becomes smaller if any, if, you know, if it even exists.
And also the committee that worked on this program, I don't, was it TC one or two, I don't know, whatever it is, we spent a awful lot of time working out the functionality of these particular spaces.
Yeah, so they're really great. I just, I just, it wouldn't have to be that you have two stairs, they could use the same stairs everyone else and go into the controlled space. It was nice to have, but they don't have to have.
Well, I think you're going to have to have it anyways, if you're doing a second floor.
You have to two.
You have to have two, you can't, you can't...
But with the basement, you didn't, because you have...
Well, that's another way to get out, okay. So this way...
There's the basement.
Yeah.
Got it.
So if you go back to the second floor, there's a fire in the stairwell, how do people get out? They can't.
Got it.
So I don't want to be on select work when that happens because I'm not going to explain to somebody that... We were too cheap to put in two stairwells, so your level is that way.
The basement did, just because the space is already used up, it can't have two stairways, but it also had another outside here.
That's fair, okay.
So there's something I would do.
Great, thank you.
There are also from when this was made, there's now some talk about needing additional offices. As you just recently talked about, office for the Public Works Director?
We definitely did not, that wasn't...
The Public Works Director said he would fight tooth and nail to be put anywhere other than a remote location, so I take that as you will.
I expected that.
Which if you think about it, police and fire, or with the police and fire, DPW would want to be with DPOW, so.
As long as he's happy.
If he's happy, he's good.
I think it may be that his office may need some renovation if it doesn't have adequate heating system or...
Could have just changed the heating system. Did we just put in a new one, heating system?
It doesn't have any furnace.
His office doesn't either.
It could use a little screw seam.
It does, it does have new heat, the...
It's like single pane windows or something.
So, so no, no Public Works Director office in this building.
And definitely sharing of ones that only use it once in a while.
And Indy, have you seen this?
I have looked quickly at it, just I have...
Any?
Fingers concerned.
Hell no, I will not work in that building if it looks like that or, you know, it would work for us or the first impression.
No, the only, the only concern that I have in the back of my mind is I, you know, I keep hearing about we're going to limit storage space and we certainly can limit storage space, but given a bunch of constraints and what we have to keep for records and that sort of thing, I have no idea how much or how quickly things are going to become digitalized and I think we're quite likely to find that we still need a fair amount of storage space for...
Because I think the basement, yeah, it's a huge space.
In terms of your storage, you still have tons.
This, this is actually by count. There's all the cabinets that you had.
So you could still tell us what you needed for that and then the rest is sort of, like, plenty of things that could all go in the basement?
And this first floor, many, most of these were also by count, but then there was room for, oh, it was at least a dozen additional. Because where they were in the annex, they had stuff piled on top of file cabinets.
That was quite a room, I have to say, and that was, did you ever do that? Okay.
I had been to the, both the Town Hall and the annex prior to coming here for the reasons and particularly the Town Hall was just overwhelming with the noise.
I couldn't keep myself in that building very long, I didn't even, I didn't even know, I was like, whatever I need to do, I don't need to do now because it's so stressful in here.
No, I, I think in, you know, I don't necessarily speak for every department head, but I think the general feeling of the department heads is anything from reproduction of the building they're in to this would be fine.
There's no way we can just buy the building we're in?
Doesn't want to sell it.
Well, I don't, he's, I think he's in a trust situation or some such thing where it's not, he's not able to, even if he wanted to.
Even though, even if he's losing tenants, there's no way for him to...
To find somebody else. Building you're in is very cheap to build.
Yeah, I keep being told that that's not a building we'd want to invest, invest in because of the challenges. But I, that was the first thing I said like twenty thousand times, can't we just buy that?
The different areas of use and you can see here that PCB was really big. Second floor, this is the Selectman's Office. This was the second floor, this is the Selectman's Office and then this was common use and so the bulk of that is unassigned area.
The other thing I would say with regard to the two, the two-story obviously is more efficient, that's wonderful, but I think there is a lot of, there's a lot of convenient overlap with the one-story, like on a morning, like one day morning, I would typically see the police chief and the fire chief and Mr. Bullock all come in, start at my office, have a question about a bill, I would bang on Joanne's door and, you know, we could work it out fairly quickly without having to go upstairs, downstairs, call people, this sort of thing.
Joanne, and you would, you would sell Joanne next to you, would you?
Yeah, it's insane.
The only thing is you wouldn't have planning and zoning and Town Clerk Tax Collector.
No, I really do like the one-story, I feel like it...
I do too, I like it so much better. It was just running into so many of these problems where we were, with the space and the expense, and then having an elevator just to go to a basement seemed a little...
Well, the other thing you do, the other thing we got criticized about, I don't remember which one, but I guess we got criticized on all of them, is not giving the people the options. We say, oh, this is it.
Right.
And I don't know if it's possible, if we can say, okay, well, we've got this two-story design, and we've got this one-story design. So you can give them the option to check it out. You probably, like, you probably get two different prices, but...
You are building in the Agrofor Conservation District.
Yeah, no, I understand, I understand.
We are exceeding the...
Yes, the billable width, yes.
Yeah.
Is it impermeable?
Amount of impermeable surface, the proportion that's allowed to go to impermeable surface on that site.
Isn't the parking lot more of a concern than the building, though? Isn't the building, the parking lot more impermeable surface than the building?
If you make it impermeable.
Yeah.
Impermeable.
Can't make it...
I know, it's very expensive, yeah.
And of course, you can make the office building impermeable too, but...
That's kind of a bummer, yeah, that's kind of a bummer.
Because you can mitigate the one-story by having like a water garden and stuff like that. The big thing is the runoff, I believe, isn't it?
Yeah, and the other thing is it, the two-story saves more land for whatever they're gonna do in the future also.
There is expenses that are saved with the two-story, like your heat. Your heating too, it's been worn out.
I did an analysis on the heating, and it was just a rough analysis. And the, what I really could, don't have a good handle on, is stack effect. Because the top of the building created the stack effect. But it looked like, when you look at the exterior areas and insulation on them, that going to two-story provided a slight advantage. But it wasn't huge. You're increasing the wall area, decreasing the attic area. But attics are really, are cheap to insulate, and walls are more expensive to insulate. And walls typically have less insulation in them than higgs.
It's the heat rising, I think that's the biggest.
The stack effect is increasing, increasing your infiltration, the pressure difference to try to force infiltration.
I mean, when you, when you're looking at real estate, the thing everybody wants is a single floor, but loves the idea. It's just that you don't tend to build those as much because you are saving so much with the two floors.
I mean, I think really part of it depends on to what extent are you gonna pay attention to low-impact development, and look at the site that you're building on, and try to minimize the effect that you're having on that site. And the two-story is better than one-story in that aspect. It's a judgment call. But, and I think you don't, you don't know the answer until you've done both designs and, okay, and what is the cost?
Right.
And how does that affect the function?
Well, I think that, I think that there's a good point to be said for allowing people to live here that are making this decision. You know, giving them the information and...
Well, that's one of the big complaints we had. We always gave them one design.
Yeah, which is, it's hard, it's like...
And they wanted a choice.
The choice was, I don't want your design, or I want the design.
They didn't want a choice in terms of what design, so...
And you go and meet with them and talk to them.
Yeah, so you give them two designs, pluses and minuses for both, and let them decide which one's...
But where do you let them do that at? Because they could be here.
Yeah, they could, but we only have two people at the moment, so...
Are there two people?
Let them decide.
Just two more than usual.
You are planning on, like, when it gets closer to the, the vote, you're gonna have announce or advertise.
Oh, so many ways, do as many of those possible at a time.
I think at that point, you've gotta kind of know which one you're going for.
It would have to be like really soon that we went out with two rough ideas and started talking to people and getting their opinion. I just feel like, if we're sitting here going back and forth, maybe they have better ideas.
Well, as John's explained, there's pluses and minuses for both.
Right.
So it's, what's your preference? And the thing is, the big thing probably is going to be, well, if the two-story is one point five million and the one-story is one point two million, I think you'd probably pick out.
It's gonna be, yeah.
I think it's gonna be closer than that, but, you know, it gives them the opportunity to say, hey, which do you want? And once again, like you said before, give them two options, I don't want either. That's an option as well, so, you know.
We've had that option.
One of the other advantages previously to the two-story is because the footprint is smaller, the basement is smaller. And the basement, the things that were useful to us that we knew of to put in the basement only half filled up a smaller basement.
Too less than...
So if you had a one-story with basement, you'd have even more unused area in the basement.
We just got Andy excited about an extra storage space for anyone, so now we took it away again, Andy.
With the two-story, the extra space you got was much more likely to be useful in the future, because it's obvious space.
Right, okay.
Rather than basement storage space.
But even, even in the basement, one of those options, we were talking about putting some people in the basement. So you could put, like, we've got the custodian person down there.
Yeah, I truly, this could be storage, or it could be an office for maintenance supervisor.
Nobody wants, that's the thing about basements, nobody wants to be in a basement. It's like so against human nature.
Yeah, but there's windows.
I don't know. The place I worked the longest, my first office, was an interior room, no windows. But the real bad part was, it was how you got to the lab.
Oh, okay.
So everybody who went to lab walked through my office.
He was really loved, I know.
When I moved out, I got an office that had a window.
Yeah.
But the bottom edge of the window was eight feet in the air. And I was on the sixth floor, so all I could see was the sky. Eventually, I got an office with a big window.
There would be a lovely sleep here from the second floor.
So I, I don't think, we've, we've never talked about putting people that would work full-time, you know, eight hours a day, down in the basement.
Right, yeah, I don't agree with that at all.
But committees and commission space where they go for an hour or two, and they're just, they're just focused on, you know, reading documents or whatever, that...
Good work. The movie office space comes to mind.
What's what?
Movie office space.
Movie office?
The movie office space.
It's in the basement?
You'd be laughing.
It's in the basement, because...
Oh, office space.
Yeah, I mean, there's a reason that that's a joke, because it's a bummer.
Yes, but...
A library knows dealing with basement space all the time.
All right, so, do you have some marching orders, Mr. John? Do you need some from us?
Yeah. I don't know if that's what I call them, but... I need to change the schedule. So, I need to talk more about the schedule. This is an unusual situation for me. I have never, this is the first time that I ever have made a schedule. It's a little tiny schedule compared to ones I've done previously. Where, and tried to update that schedule, and yet, I am not the project manager, and I'm not working for someone who is the project manager. In the past, I've done schedules with Prime River Suretrack, and with Microsoft Project. Now that I'm paying for the software myself, I'm using open-source software. And, but always, it was either I was the project manager, and all the work was gonna be done by me, or people that I directed, or companies that hired me. Or I was doing it for another group within the company, and that project manager, my service was just, I was the one that knew how to use the software. So that project manager came to me and told me what all the tasks were, what all the dependencies were, durations, resources needed, and that project manager came to me periodically to update their progress, and my only service was putting in, I knew how to operate the software.
So isn't this something...
In this schedule, I put in just a guess.
Right.
And with what I put in as a guess, at our last meeting, we saw that we were sixteen days late, and that was twelve days ago, so now we're twenty-eight days late. But you, I mean, my question is, who's the project manager?
And I think this is where we're getting stuck, because what's happening is we're coming in and we're talking about this, and I appreciate that we've been able to go through it and get it more specific. I think at some point, we have to be willing to pass this off to professionals, and we have to have a group that is gonna be in charge of this specific building, that's not just the three of us, I think that's, I mean, none of us are experts in this field.
I think, what you're saying is you need someone to direct you.
Yeah, but I think it needs to not be just one person. I think it needs to be a group of people that are specifically trained, like, to have the skills we're looking for.
I think the skills you're looking for is someone that'll pull the answers out of you.
Yeah. So what are you suggesting?
Well, I think that there's decisions and plans that you need to make, that you, as a board, are not making.
Okay. I think it's hard, because you're kind of leading our, our thing, and so we aren't doing... I think it's confusing, because I think we're trying to figure out, like, where you're taking us and we're letting you do that, but we're also not allowing us to talk to the people that would work, like, normally, if you weren't able to, which is awesome that you can, and I appreciate that, but normally, we'd be talking to different builders, and we would start doing the stuff with them, and then they would do that with us, or whatever the group was that we're dealing with. So I think it's time to get them on board. I don't know, I, I don't know how, how we can continue to have just the three of us and you making this decision.
It's a chicken and eggs.
Right. If we wait and we get more people, or different people, to make these decisions, we're wasting even more time. But if we just ourselves do, it's not enough, it's not enough knowledge base.
So the question for you is, how is it that you want to proceed? The select board, that's the question for the select board.
My, at least in my vision, how about this? That we come together and we work out whether this floor plan is, at least basically what we agree with. And then we seek guidance, or hire somebody, bring them in, and have them, okay, this is what we're thinking. This is what you, we want us to walk through, this is kind of what our days are, in terms of schedule-wise, and see if they can accommodate us. It sounds like three or four of them are available. So let us finish the floor plan, if you will. Doesn't have to be exact, but just basically, almost everything's where we want it to be. Let's have those four firms, or three firms, or whatever it is, come in. We'll show them that particular thing and say, this is what we're working on, how could you help us?
So one of, one of the questions, in fact, one of the, Andy said one of the firms he had asked, is what delivery method are you interested in? A number of these firms will work in more than one delivery method.
And that's, Bowlin asked that question, and I expect that they ask that question because they consider themselves more of a construction management firm than an actual builder. I think it may well be worth having a conversation with Corino and North Branch. They'll come in and talk to you, not charge you anything, and say, that's nuts, we absolutely can't work with you, or, yeah, we could offer this, or you could continue on your own, and...
So Bowlin worked with, well, Bowlin and Bressinger, Bowlin and Bressinger were the architects. But Bowlin hired the contractors, the subs.
Bowlin was the construction manager.
Yeah, so they're the ones, so, it sounds like Bowlin doesn't do any architectural stuff itself.
They were the ones that had the most questions, we wanted to know, by the way, if they hired an architect, and what the delivery method was. Corino and North Branch were much more interested in, do you wanna talk to us upfront? We'd be happy to... And my experience with Groen, I'm surprised didn't respond, is very much like that, too. And, and he basically sat down with us and said, if you wanna use an architect, this is what you're looking at, if you wanna use us, this is what you're looking at. If you want us to work with your people on a, you know, a basis like this, this is what you're looking at. Where do you wanna go?
So, if we had to design, or basically just the floor plan, why don't we have these firms come in and have them speak to us about different methods that they can do?
And then we know what we're picking.
And then the other thing is, when they're in here, we get to evaluate them. Are these people that we can work with? Are these people that we're not very happy to work with? You're gonna get an idea, and the other thing is, which was important, who is it will we be working with? Will we be working with you, or will we be working with the B team, the C team, the D team?
And the question is, who is it that's gonna be the person, like, you know, at the, at the middle school, there was a couple people that they knew, asked questions and that kind of thing. So who's gonna be that, because we can't wait, you know, we can't wait every month to talk to us, or every two weeks, or whatever. So, who is that? And...
I think it's for this particular period of time, I think it's us. Because we're meeting, there's nothing stops them. Right at the moment, we're doing, like, what, every Monday we're meeting.
Right.
Nothing stops us from doing, you know, every Monday meeting, if they have something to talk to. We're here to answer your question.
I just feel like there's people that are more knowledgeable and have more information about buildings and cost-effectiveness than I do. I mean, I've done some, and I have some.
You're hiring these people, they're the experts, they're gonna come and tell you. If they need something decided, they're not gonna decide for you. You're gonna have to tell them what it is.
Right.
The, the questions really are not about what kind of flooring we can use, or what are the walls gonna be made on. The initial question is about what kind of arrangement do you want to have with the company that you're working with? And, you know, that's, that's where we talked about, and sent you that article on the different methods of construction delivery.
Who's taking the risk?
Some of the advantages, disadvantages of them. And how some of them work better for one situation or another. And you brought up previously the desire for having a guaranteed maximum price. And trying to achieve that with a, a construction manager. And that's a case where risk has shifted to the construction manager. It's called a construction manager at risk. And the cost for the construction manager accepting that risk has shifted to you.
But there's a difference in that you can go to the public and say, this is the cost we're asking for. And that's a very, that's a much easier thing to say yes to than it is to say, we think it should be this, but I mean, you know, the prices are all, like, that's a very different... So for me, that security is a very valuable thing. I understand that it might not be double as dollar just cheap or whatever, but also, they tend to keep things, you know, not getting out of control, because there's a reason for them not letting it out of control. So I'm not sure you really lose that much.
Because prices go up. This particular building, when we specked it out, was one point four million dollars. When we went to build it, it was one point seven. And the things that people said, well, you did a terrible job, because you didn't anticipate that. But the risk was on the town, and the risk, the town took it. And they, they got kind of burned a little bit. That's why we had to make the building smaller and not to the second floor.
And I just feel like that's not a risk that this town is willing to take.
I can contact the people that have an interest in speaking with you, and I think to have a preliminary conversation, the first thing they're gonna tell you is what, what they can offer you, whether they, you know, whether they're construction management, or whether they specialize in design-build, and, and you'll know what they're about, what we can do.
Every company like that that I've looked at, their website tells you that.
Yeah.
So let's start talking about it.
And they can work in multiple ways.
Great.
But I think we're killing two birds with one stone, because then we get to meet these people.
Yeah.
And ask them questions about, you know, the people that show up at the meeting, are they the people that are gonna be working with us? Or are they just there to get the job, and then they give it to somebody else, so...
No, I, I like the idea of being able to talk to them. Our next meeting is the twelfth of September, so it's not, it's two weeks away.
Well, our next meeting is the sixth, right?
No, we canceled it.
No, but we did cancel that, yeah. Yes!
You did. You've been trying to cancel it.
I was gonna say, it's actually a good share.
Yeah, not enough heart enough.
Blame me.
We're definitely gonna blame you.
Do you wanna have any more talks about this? Do we have to be more tight on our design? I feel like we have a pretty, like, tight enough at the point. We don't have to be perfect, because it's general ideas, and they're gonna change things anyway.
So, can we maybe meet about this particular subject next week sometime? I don't know if that gives you enough time, John, to give us...
You mean to have him tighten up that more?
Yeah, so we can see it. So we have something that's kind of like ninety percent there. Maybe there's a few tweaks we'd ask John to do, but at least we can say, okay, this is kind of what we want. And then schedule for the week after that, times for these particular people to come in. And then schedule for the week after that, times for these particular people to come in.
I think in your initial talks with them, they're not gonna care what the arrangement of the floor, arrangement of the design. They're certainly gonna wanna see what is it you're gonna give them for them to work with. So that would be just one of these. And it's gonna be much more about how do you wanna work with us.
Okay. So can we ask you, Andy, to set up some times for next week? Find out when they're available? Maybe this board can tell you specifically which days they could meet. I don't know if I should say this, but I'm free every night next week.
Oh my gosh. No, totally.
I know that, but I'm free, so I'm not gonna be the problem.
The only night that I'm free next week is the eighth.
You're free on the eighth?
I can do that.
Yes.
Except for, I don't know what all these new, I haven't gotten all the new schedules on here for all the things I need to be at. But Andy, do you know, do we have any? I have, like, just joined, like, five more committees, I don't know when I will ever...
You should not do that.
As far as I know, the eighth is clear. So I'll start with the eighth and then get back to you tomorrow.
So is the plan to do them, like, one, two, three? Or do you want different days for different ones? Would you want to...
No.
No what?
Let me see if I can try to do them, one, two, three, on the eighth.
Oh, on the eighth we're gonna talk then, or we're gonna talk to them on the twelfth?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Each, we're gonna talk about this building and tape, we're gonna tape up them?
No, we're gonna have them come in because John's telling us they don't necessarily need to see what it is. They need to have an idea of what they're gonna get.
Sorry, I was typing, I must have missed.
So they...
I'll start with the eighth and try to stack them.
Yeah, I mean, luckily everyone's been busy, free is really small, so...
And be back to you with whoever they get their response.
Okay. And, uh...
You can start with the twelfth. So your approach is, um, we have these, um, well, pictures of floor plans. This is what we're thinking of the building. I think helps.
Yeah. I mean, that's what the average, most people don't go much deeper. I mean, I, when you build, you have to start and then start working with the people you're gonna build with.
One of the things that they're gonna be interested in talking to you more than they might other folks is because you have property. You've got sites. And a lot of towns go into this saying, we're trying to raise enough money to purchase a site. And that puts the fear down in these guys that they're gonna spin their wheels and...
All right. Well, we got the site. We don't have the money to build it yet, but that's something we're working on, so...
And we're not sure about the access yet.
Yep. Excuse me? I didn't know. There were two, then there were one, then there were none.
Do you wanna, in the future, maybe find out? Maybe later before we make them sit through the meeting or...
They can interrupt me.
They have not said anything to me before.
Did you have any reason to interrupt? I feel bad, we always let you just wait.
Uh, not at this point, I'm just kind of witnessing what's taking place.
Yeah, it's pretty terrifying, so thanks for being here to witness this.
Sorry.
We just, no, I just, it's one of those things where it's really challenging because you have so many different possible ways to do something. And what's the best way for everyone? It's just hard.
Yeah, well, you're not gonna please everybody.
Exactly. It'd be nice to please as many people as possible.
Sure, sure. And I just figure, as long as I'm here, the more I know, I mean, there could be, I could have some insight that might be useful.
I'd love that, yeah.
I don't know.
We would love to have this room filled with people that had some good ideas.
I mean, I don't know a lot of people in town, but I think, like, I've gotten the sense that nobody wants to spend any money at all.
Exactly.
And I know people were upset about this building. And I know people are gonna say, why do you need town offices? You have a perfectly good building, it's a lot cheaper. They don't care why it doesn't work. They just assume it, we don't need that.
I was last week asked, why do you need to build a building, is it cheaper just to rent?
And I, I don't know, but I have a sense that that's, in large part, the consensus. Certainly not the poor people that have to work into the building, you know, they want a new building. So...
We can show them, like, on the map, we can show them, with the exponential growth of the rent of the building we have, the money we spend on it that we don't get back and it's not investment.
The thing is being proactive. Right now, we have a lease on the structure that we're in with two renewals, so that takes us out for nine years. After that, there is no commitment. He can say, you know, year eight, he has to give us a notice, but he can say, oh, no, you're done. Where do we go? And we have not planned and we just figured we'd be there forever. You have to plan on eventually not being in that particular structure. So I'd rather do it in a controlled way versus, oh my god, in six months, you have to be out, where are we going?
And for me, it's like, if we're gonna be spending literally half a million dollars over nine years on a building that we now have nothing to show for, wouldn't we wanna get out of that as soon as possible and put that money towards a building we're paying ourselves for? So I think that's...
That's the old lease versus buy a car issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the thing is, it has to be compelling for people.
That's right.
I own my cars for, like, ten or more years, so I own them all.
Don't worry, I know the whole lot.
So if the town of Lee is gonna close down three years from now...
Right, that we should lease, yes.
Let's just stop and keep renting the building we have.
But that's, that's the thing, you're right. We have to communicate that really well with everybody. And we have to show that we have done everything in our power to be as fiscally conservative because nobody wants to waste money. I think that's the key.
Yeah.
And it's gonna have, it's gonna have to be monetarily convincing as well. So we...
I think there's just a simple graph.
Well, it has to be so that people don't understand it. Because I think we have to get to a position, and I've talked to those people too, they say, I don't wanna spend any money. You have to get to a position that, yeah, I don't wanna spend any money, but this kind of makes sense.
And we did start talking about how much we needed a town hall in the community in the seventies. Like, that one wasn't gonna work and that we needed to...
It needs to be renovated, so, yep. The highway, the highway manager actually went underneath there to show up the floor in the old, because they didn't have any plans, they didn't have anybody to do anything, so they had to do what they had to do. So you can still use the structure, so...
What is going on in that building, that newish building? That where it used to be where the pizza shop was?
Oh, that's a, he's a, he's an electrical contractor in the bottom and there's apartments at the top.
Yeah, it's all over there.
It's owned by the same guy that owned the pizza shop?
No.
No.
That was the Wellingtons, no. Uh, this is, I don't know his name, he's electrical contractor, he's been to some of our meetings, I don't know his name.
And he's using it himself and renting space out?
Yeah, there's like three apartments.
Oh, there are apartments.
Two apartments.
Oh, it was a big one and then two little ones.
Was it on the building next to your town hall?
Yep. The one that's not very pretty.
Yeah.
But yeah, so he runs this business and so I guess he's happy.
The one comment that has been made the most at the town offices from any number of people that walk in and know that you're having these meetings is, why aren't you building a one-story building on Stevens Field?
Oh, we have retort to that.
That is the only comment...
We have retort to that.
...impeditively, I mean, it's not something that comes up.
It's right up here.
Oh, yeah. Well, I was actually thinking that myself, until I pulled up here this evening. Because there's kids playing soccer out there, I thought, nobody uses that soccer field, what if we had it all together?
It would be, that would be super nice, but the land itself is not buildable.
Yeah.
Oh, why is that?
Just get some ledge in the back, you'd have to stick closer to the road. That's where this building originally was, over there. Wasn't it?
There's essentially no such thing as not buildable.
Okay.
You just have to blast.
It's just a matter of cost.
And the thing is, if you blast that ledge, it's right next to the bog and the conservation people would not be happy. So they put up a big stick.
And there's two, there's two areas, like, one is here where you need really fast ability to get in and out quickly and not have a lot of traffic around. And then you have that area where you want people to get a few things done, go to the library, go to the town hall, get their, you know, where you kind of want them to participate. So I think it's a different kind of environment.
Different feel.
Yeah, lingering and then, like, you don't want a lot of kids in the middle, exactly. I think that's the other thing that we were looking at.
Is there any reason to hang on to the annex building? Is it...
Depends on who you talk to.
Yeah, it depends on who you talk to.
You've decided not to answer those?
Because that could be an hour and a half long conversation.
It, we, at one of these meetings, we did discuss having those conversations and kind of trying to look at it as an entire center. But it's, it's very fraught.
It just seems like that building is, like, really in the way.
If you took it down...
It's actually not in the way of anything.
Yeah. If you took it down, you couldn't build anything else in this place.
It's entirely in the front setback, the fifty-foot front setback. So if you tore it down, the only thing you'd put there would be landscaping. You wouldn't put parking there. You wouldn't put a driveway there.
And why is that?
Because it's entirely in the fifty-foot front setback, which is part of town zoning. Town zoning has, in that area, there's a fifty-foot front setback, twenty-five-foot side back.
And we can't, we can't hurt, you're the town.
The town can break its own rules.
We've left it there, we're breaking the rules right now by letting it stay.
It's grandfathered, so...
Right. But the right thing to do would be to not have a building there at all.
Why would that be the right thing?
I mean, if we were following all the rules that we have from...
It's grandfathered.
If we follow the rules of nineteen fifty...
But the rules are there for a reason and it's because you wanna have that space for the highway and...
But the rules weren't there in nineteen fifty. Just as for the town hall, the rules weren't there in eighteen fifty-two.
Right, but I'm saying that if we were to follow the rules...
It's four years, wasn't it four years? Yeah. But the thing is, you could do that to anybody's house because you've got many houses that are on, you know, less than two acres. You've got houses that are not setback far enough, so you're gonna make all those people destroy their house? No.
No, but there's...
It's grandfathered, so...
The existing, the existing town hall was mostly in setback.
Right.
Mostly in the front setback and also probably inside setback.
I think Katra was saying that if we took it down and were to build something, we would probably try to follow our rules.
Yeah, we wouldn't put it back there.
That's all.
That's the point, is that if we tore that down, there isn't any useful thing that we would put in this place.
Unless we broke our own rules again.
And so the old town hall, that, can that be torn down and rebuilt?
You'd probably be burnt in effigy by certain people in the town.
There's layers of love for buildings.
Layers of love.
Right, and I get that because I'm one of them, right?
That's the, that's the love of the town is that building. That's like the first one that was like, that will be protected.
So, and what happened to just renovating it? I know it's, like, condemned, but, like, any building can be resurrected.
So we can resurrect it, it's, it's not, um, it has been looked at for many times for a long time. And I think it's well over a million dollars to make it usable and it's not even gonna cover any, well, to make it usable in any way for town hall space. I mean, that was just, it was like six hundred thousand to renovate just to make it into what it is upgraded and running used.
To make it into a town hall open space, reading space.
Right, not a town office building. So if you're saying you wanna move what's in the rented space back into town hall, that's...
It's not big enough.
And it's gonna cost way more than the new building. So it would be cost us as a town less to renovate the town hall for what, for what it is and just renovate it and then to build the new building, then to try to turn that building into what we need it to be. I think that's what we discussed, figured I went to the map.
So was there, were there votes where people could vote for... Because, like, the idea about having options for different designs. My sense is that you were apt to get an actual vote, if they have a choice.
I agree, and we have voted, there's some things we have voted on as a town that we voted to buy the land the parish's houses on and to take it down. But then we voted again to wait to decide to take it down. So we, that, that's the thing that's kind of hard, like, we have to decide how we handle the vote once it's done. And then we have the vote, we could have a vote with a choice. I just don't, every time I've ever suggested that, everyone said you can't, you have to have a yes or no.
It's hard, in the Warren article.
Yeah. Because I, I love the idea of being like, here's your choice.
I don't think you could win it. Because you'd have to say, is it this or that? And you...
Yeah, you have to do two Warren articles.
But then what if they both pass?
Right.
That's...
Is there, like, a preliminary, like, mock...
Pre-vote or something?
Yeah, like...
And that's what we were saying, like, could we bring it to people soon, two choices? But then here's, everyone's like, well, it's...
Like, have all the choices on display at the current town hall? With plenty of, so when people are coming to do their business and it smacks them in the face, check it out, because, you know, think about it. Here's a ballot box, put your, put your, put your two cents in.
And I think we've had similar things in the past. We've had all these different committees where we've had different ideas and we've brought it to people. The problem is, if you have three different choices and each one is liked thirty-three percent and then you pick one, then you only have thirty-three percent of the community liking that choice and sixty-six don't like it. So now you've given yourself no, no...
Churn your minority.
Well, yeah, but then, so then you know idea, you have an idea how it's gonna go down.
You could have ranked choice voting.
I love that idea.
What's...
Ranked choice voting?
I want them to do that.
I love rank, yes, I would love for that to happen.
Maine does it.
It's where you, instead of just voting for, like, the one person you like best for president, you would actually rank all of the, like, all of the people in order of preference.
So if your first choice gets, like, no votes and you're, instead of losing your vote altogether...
Your second.
Your second choice is weighted, but it's...
That's a good idea, you know?
They do it in Maine, it's really interesting.
That's a, that's a great idea.
They do away with the party system. So, so like, for instance, in Maine, like, if the high top vote getters are two Democrats for a position, it's not a Republican versus a Democrat, it's two Democrats and you pick whichever one.
Yeah, in what choice?
Also means that people tend to vote for a third candidate.
More often.
They've shown more often because they don't feel like they're throwing their vote away necessarily.
It balances the playing field as well, so...
It's interesting, thank you.
You should have ranked voting in lean.
Can we just have ranked voting?
The state has to give you the, can't do anything that was...
But we can do it for the town votes. Too bad they're all pretty much designed the way they say.
Do we even have enough people running for office?
Jerry would have interest in your work.
My last...
You can't afford your own, your own town.
My last comment is, well, we all know how hard it is to get something like this passed in this town. But if you had something that the town can get excited about...
You mean like a butterfly?
Yes, where it could be, like, somehow all lime, like, yes, like, kind of, not... It's not, it's not a bait and switch. It's like, okay, we're building something useful that the town really needs, whether you realize it or not. And there's this really beautiful...
I love the idea, but it's a for-profit, not for the town. And how do we show that it's making, it's improving the lives of people in the town? Besides that it's a fun thing to do, but it's gonna increase their traffic, it's gonna increase their need for, like, it is a lot of expense for the people. And yes, it's a fun, exciting thing. I think that's where you can, when you convince me of that, then I'll, then I'll be on board. But it's, it's not, it's not a town venture, it's an independent venture. Yes, we are, definitely, on a different topic. So that's, that's something for another day.
I love the idea of the...
I love the idea too, I just don't know how to make it a town.
I don't either, but that's where kind of creative outside the box.
Yeah, and I'm so game for that.
And even, you know, I mean, I, I don't think you necessarily wanna take an architect's time for that, but sometimes they're really good at...
I just, how do you, how do you make a, like, are there examples of private businesses on, like, and how that works with it? I just don't, I don't have many.
It, it would not necessarily, you know, maybe there's, there's some kind of hybrid situation where there's a portion of proceeds that go back into the, you know what I mean? Like, I don't know.
You can have a lease. I'm familiar with renting the end of our school to a pizza place.
Okay.
For twenty years, that's, we've almost done that.
The end of the school?
In the town that I live in. In the town that I live in.
The part of the school building is a pizza place?
The abandoned school that we use as the town office.
Oh, the abandoned.
They rent the back end of it as a pizza restaurant.
That's funny.
We've had a long-term contract.
So then if the lease was enough, it made.
Do you get pizza discounts or not?
We do not.
I think.
Yes.
Need a better, better contract next time.
We also have a petition between the.
So if the lease was expensive enough that it helped offset the cost of this building.
Yeah.
Then you could, that's how it has to get sold.
Then you're going to have to come up with the money to renovate the structure.
Right. Because you're leasing it. That's where we get stuck.
Because the problem is, because now that is a town structure.
Right.
So it's a higher standard in terms of what you need to do to that structure. It's not just, oh, let's renovate and somebody can live in it. There's other things the town has to do because the town owns it. That's the problem.
This is where it gets tricky because it's the details that always make the fun things not fun.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure.
It's ten to eight. Anything else? So we're not meeting next week except for the eighth possibly. And then we're back on the 12th?
Yes.
And the plan is on the eighth that you're going to ask companies in.
Yep.
And then you're just going to have the little, there's a little thinking of, what can you think or what can you do?
Yes.
So at that particular time, if we had, even if it's a rough, what, one of those two options so they can just get an idea of what we're thinking. And you can just pass it out. I don't think we have to do it on the recording show. Good night.
Good night.
Just something we can pass out to them so they just have an idea of what it is we're looking at. We're not looking at the Taj Mahal. We're looking at an office building. This is kind of the layout that we're thinking. Nothing in stone, but at least give them an idea of what we're thinking in terms of, you know, what size, what magnitude in terms of what we're talking about, so.
And as far as delivery method, you're just going to ask them?
I think, I think, I don't want to speak to the two ladies, but I think we need more information in terms of what they can offer and what the dynamic is, at least for me. I, I'll just speak for myself. I need more information.
I, yeah, I feel like it's assuming what someone can offer you and then making choices on it without any information is really hard. So for me, I, when I do a project like this, I definitely want to find out what's out there and then understand more. And then I know where more, what I still need to work on and then I can do that. So, yeah, I want to get started communicating. They're the ones who are going to build it, if we have to build it.
If we get the money. It's all about money.
And first thing you're thinking, we can build something for less than two million dollars. And they're like, there's not a chance in this world. But we have to say, well, then we don't really have this figured out. And then we can, you know, say.
Well, you'd have to work out the numbers. So right at the moment, the thing, thought process we've gone through is if we were to assign the sixty thousand from the rent for the building that we're in now, the sixty thousand from this structure, don't tell them, oh, your tax rate's not going to let, but this building's bond terminates. And if we say, use that same amount of money, try to.
It won't change, right?
Won't change. So that would give us about one point five, if it is two million dollars, how do you get the rest of the money? Do you increase the bond amount? Do you use some of the money out of the town building's trust fund?
Right.
Because there's some money in there. What is the makeup? Because people want to know, how much is this going to cost me?
Right. And if they're looking at what we need and what we want and they're saying, you know, this is a three or four million dollar project, then I think we have a different conversation.
Yeah, I understand. I don't think three, four million.
I agree. I'm just saying, I think it's important to start talking to people so that they actually do this.
The, the nursing home they're talking about is five hundred dollars a square foot.
Right.
Right, right now, the six hundred and twenty-four square, six hundred and twenty-four square foot library addition is over eight hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, for them, yeah.
If you make the assumption that the deck costs three hundred dollars a square foot, it's a hundred thousand dollars out of the cost. And right now, the library is looking at an estimate of twelve hundred dollars per square foot. If you consider a square foot to be a square foot of the first floor plus the square foot of the unfinished basement underneath.
Okay. So we will discuss that another time. The point is, we don't know what prices are. So we need to talk to companies and figure out what those things.
Because prices are.
Critical thing that I've been trying to recommend is that you particularly look at what companies have produced product buildings where they did something that significantly reduced the cost. What are the, what things can you give up that will significantly reduce the cost? And I'm not talking about the building you're renting, which is one where it was built, you know, as inexpensively as possible, minimum code. And you know that that's, you know, what it's built from. But are there other ways? And I, I don't know the answers.
But we have to ask them questions, yeah.
Well, yeah, because bowing, I can give this example from the middle school, but you know, fifty million versus two million?
It's very different.
Very different, very different.
Yeah, so I think it's important for us to ask them about apples to apples, things they've done in the past to see what we're talking about, so. I think getting started with the conversation helps. They know what we're trying to do and we can figure out what their options are. And then we can go look at things and they can tell us about, you know, I, I don't, I've been trying to, you know, research, but I can only find so much information. So if I know.
Well, they can also take you to sites that they've done previously so you can see what they have done. So it sounds like a few field trips at least, I would think. Anything else? It's five minutes of anything.
So Scott, you're running the meeting next?
What is, don't, what, oh, yeah, it's a slick wording, so I posted and stuff like that. I thought you meant, is it, I'm going to mean it after this.
He wants to know he has to run it.
No, I'm, I'm telling you that this venture you're, you're going on next week is probably, I've never been as poorly prepared for anything.
No, that's, no, no, we're not asking you to run it in any way, shape or form.
And I've never been on a group as poorly prepared because I think you are.
Yep. Point taken. So all I'm looking for from you for next Thursday is if you can give us one of those designs that, you know, is close to what we talked about. I don't necessarily need you, like I said, do another dog and pony show. Just have something that we can pass out. That's the only thing I'm looking for, for that meeting, so.
So you want something on paper that you can pass out?
Yeah, or you can send it to us electronically and we can print it out, but just something that we can hand out to them. Because I don't think we need a dog and pony show.
We very much appreciate the effort you've been putting in to help us understand this and to help us kind of narrow it in. And I think, I think it's been really nice to have a chance to, to go through it and to think about it in different.
I think we should double his pay. What do you think?
I think we should triple it.
Triple, okay. You're very extravagant. All right, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Public speaker?
Hi.
All right, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Andy.